Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez took the lead as organizer and even played guitar with rocker luchadores El Conjunta Nueva Ola, a slamming celebration mixing new with traditional.
I've never done that before. I was there to be an observer until I got pulled onto it. So I'm proud to perform on a short moment's notice. I did not grow up in Mexico. I was born here in the States and I'm a proud American. But my parents' heritage is so important to me. They're from the state of Zacateca, so I grew up going back to Mexico and eating the food and dancing to Mexican music. So to me, I can't help but just think of all the sacrifices that so many immigrant families have made through centuries of coming to this country for a better life.
So what brought you out tonight?
We like to party.
Yeah?
Also performing Salinas, a Salina Quintanilla Perez tribute band. Like the late, great Salina, more than 40% of LA City residents are of Mexican heritage.
In fact, my grandfather helped build this beautiful building we call City Hall. And he went back to Mexico and I was born in Mexico. So Mexicans really have a bi-national, bi-cultural experience with the city of Los Angeles. And by continuing with this celebration, we celebrate our heritage.
LAPD officer and yes, mariachi singer Chris Reissa also wowed the crowd, performing with Mariachi Arcoiles de Los Angeles. They're the first LGBTQ mariachi band in the world. LA City leaders call on citizens to support the immigrant community and all disenfranchised people during this divisive time in our nation.
To remain optimistic, to be forceful in our assertion of our rights as citizens of this country, but also to protect those who come here with hopes and aspirations to be the next generation of Americans.
Legendary Mexican performers Los Tucanos capped off the night's festivities. Over in Hollywood, it may not be the Emmys or the Oscars, but this local recognition of Emmy-nominated shows shot in LA highlights the importance of keeping productions in Hollywood. Rashid Gwell has more.
We make a show about a family.
Jess Rosenthal, producer of the hit TV series This Is Us, is among those being recognized at the Made in Hollywood Honors. It's a special recognition given to those productions that are filming here in Los Angeles.
We have the talent, the production, the infrastructure, the locations, and can I just remind everyone of the weather?
Made in Hollywood Honors was started in 2011 to raise awareness about productions being filmed and kept in California and Hollywood. And at this event, legendary actresses Renee Taylor and Diane Ladd helped celebrate producers from this year's 25 Emmy-nominated shows. HBO currently has five shows they were recognized for.
For Barry, Curb Your Enthusiasm, Silicon Valley, Westworld, and The Tale. We just want to thank Hollywood, all of California, for continued support of the industry.
We have AB 1839, which was approved in 2014, went into effect the next year in 2015. So we're essentially in year three of that. And we're about to adopt 2.0. And what that does is it gives us up to $400 million in tax incentives that we didn't have before, so that that can be part of the financing package of a television show or a feature film. And a lot of television shows have come back or have chosen to film here as a result.
When we talk about keeping productions in Los Angeles, it's not just about the tax incentive and money, but it's also about helping those who work in the industry find a balance between life and work.
For my members, it's meant that producers who once had to relocate for weeks or months, and in several cases, years at a time, can now occasionally drive their kids to school in the morning, or enjoy a meal with their families at the end of the day. The simple things that many people outside of the production community take for granted.
Councilman Mitchell Farrell says there has been an increase in studio productions since last year, and currently, more sound stages are being constructed in LA.
With productions coming back to California, more than 18,000 cast members, 29,000 crew members, and more than 400,000 background actors have been employed. Another city golf course goes green by changing the way it waters the lawn. Here's more on how you too can score a hole-in-one by saving water and money at the same time.
The installation of new pipe signifies a game changer at Griffith Park's Roosevelt Golf Course. Recycled water will be used for irrigation here. It's now par for the course at eight city-owned golf courses.
This recycle project means beautiful golf courses without tapping into our reservoirs.
Recycled water for irrigation helps save the city 730 million gallons of potable or drinkable water a year. The DWP says that's enough precious water to supply 6,700 homes. Now, all these improvements are expected to go a long way in California's seemingly endless drought. Though the governor officially lifted it last year, state officials now say most of the state is experiencing either moderate drought or abnormally dry conditions. LA City Parks have changed their game plan to conserve.
Synthetic soccer fields around the city, we have nearly 50 of those around the city, which save a lot of water and also increase access to the kids and families that are using those parks. And then turf reduction is another one, where we've taken out turf where we don't really need it.
You can also conserve at home by replacing that old washing machine with an energy-efficient model. The city offers rebates.
We just increased the rebate from $300 to $400. So it's meant to help encourage folks to replace old washing machines, get a new fixture in your house. And that's one of a number of ways that you can do your part.
Because if you're gonna play, play to win by saving water and money at the same time.
For more tips, visit ladwp.com. The Armenian community is taking matters into their own hands by learning how they can be better prepared to help themselves and their neighbors in case of a major disaster.
Karina Keshishin is among the residents in Tahanga that's learning about CERT, also known as Community Emergency Response Team.
CERT is a community preparedness program that is overseen, this program through FEMA, that allows local communities to be able to take basic response training to be able to be prepared for any kind of disaster that may be faced in their community.
With over 200 languages spoken in Los Angeles County, officials say it's important to make sure members of all communities are prepared in case of an emergency. At this event, Armenian residents learned about how they could participate in this program.
Today, we're kicking off the CERT training program that I had translated into Armenian. It's so important for us not to have a language barrier in emergency preparedness because emergencies know no cultural or language boundaries. And it's really incumbent upon all of us to be better prepared in the event of a major catastrophe in the city of Los Angeles.
We would like to see all of our participants here today learn what it would take to become a certified first responder and assist with the efforts if, in fact, something were to happen. Now we have more people that are available to help attend to the community first.
Sometimes things happen unexpectedly. And you know, property is lost and sometimes lives are lost. But if we take the time to prepare, we're better off and we're more resilient.
The training is free and entails learning about the various aspects of emergency preparedness along with the simulated drill. The first class is anticipated to be held in January of 2019.
The more prepared I am in my community is the more able we will be to support each other in the event that it does happen.
This is the first time CERT has been translated and taught for the Armenian community.
For more info, visit cert.la.com. The city of LA is leading the charge when it comes to encouraging Angelenos to switch their gas-guzzling vehicles for something a little more earth-friendly. Ana Marcos takes us to National Drive Electric Week.
This may have looked like a typical car sales lot, but it was something a little greener and more eco-friendly than that.
I'm really excited because like electric vehicles is gonna be our future.
National Drive Electric Week brought hundreds of people out to the ladwp's parking lot to test drive electric cars.
You don't have to worry about the fumes combusting, killing you, you know what I mean? But the electric car, it's peaceful. It's like a breath of fresh air.
This is an opportunity for our customers and the community to come out and see electric vehicles, drive them, drive the vehicles, get to experience the technology.
By the way, if you liked one, you could buy it or lease it. And look at the choices, from James Bond to this golf cart-sized ride. So what did people think after their test drive?
The acceleration is smoother in an electric vehicle. That's one of the main things I noticed.
Uh, they look cool.
I thought it was great. I thought, um, I thought it was way better than a regular car.
The electric vehicle is more fun, mostly because it has instant response.
It saves you a lot of money than regular gas, especially rising gas prices.
Cons are, you have to like, if you're planning a trip or something like that, you just have to be aware of, you know, you kind of have to, even every day, you kind of have to keep in mind how much electric charge you have and stuff.
To sweeten the deal, ladwp was offering plenty of rebates. There were rebates for buying or leasing used electric vehicles, rebates for installing a charging station at your home, and more.
It's a priority for us to be able to clean our air and fight climate change and get people into cleaner, cooler cars.
We have solar panels on our roof, so when we charge our car, we're charging with totally renewable green energy.
Well, most of us aren't quite there yet, but city leaders hope more people start thinking of a greener, more renewable energy future when they are due for their next car trade-in.
And here's another reason to go green. Some of those electric vehicle rebates put hundreds of dollars back in your pocket. While he's one of the most outspoken members of the LA City Council, representing District 13, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell has a deep connection to his district, not only when he's at work, but also when he's off the clock. On our latest episode of Council Off the Clock, we find out what makes the council member tick.
So you got your start as a dancer, right?
I was a professional dancer when I was in my twenties, yes.
So professional dancer means?
Uh, I did touring shows. I did musicals, Broadway-style musicals.
Okay, so with that said, we got kind of your background. Let's look at some music. If I grab like something randomly out of here, how do you?
Well, let's grab this one. I haven't performed in this, but uh...
Do you know the songs?
It's a great, it's a great song. I know the song, All That Jazz.
Right.
Yeah. "Come on, babe, we're gonna paint the town. And all that jazz."
Great.
But as far as performing in these, I certainly have not been in Hamilton.
Here we go.
I have been in Oklahoma.
You have?
I certainly have.
The one show I've seen on Broadway-
Yes, I did Oklahoma.
-was with Andrea Martin as the ant.
Wow.
On Broadway.
That's really cool.
On Oklahoma.
That's great.
So you come out here and something has to change or switch in you to make you say, okay, I want to be a politician.
There was a transition from, I am tired of struggling in the arts, I'm struggling to make a living at times, to I want to do something meaningful. How can I make improvements in the communities I represent? How can I improve the quality of life? And how can I support the organizations, the nonprofits, the various community groups, all of the folks who want to accomplish the same thing, and that is make our city better?
I know how much this place means to you. Can you talk a little bit about what it means to Hollywood and why you want to keep it around?
Amoeba is a brand that everyone supports and doesn't want to see go away. So when this proposal came my way to close Amoeba and put a development here, that was not what Amoeba ever wanted. It's also a small business that employs dozens and dozens of people.
Absolutely.
And so it's a driver of the local economy and it provides jobs for people who live nearby. And that's exactly the kind of thing that I like.
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. So I know you gotta get out of here, you're gonna run, but the last thing I'm gonna do before we go is I'm gonna buy you some Johnny Cash. I'm gonna do it right-
No kidding?
I'm gonna buy you some Johnny Cash right now.
All right. I loved his last recording and then his whole Ring of Fire with the Spanish trumpets, Mexican trumpets. My god. Is that the best or what?
And then when you think about it, that you think that June wrote that.
Phenomenal.
Movie nights over the summer months are a big hit in Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez's district. But you never saw one like this at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where plenty of underwater thrills lurked.
The waters look calm and peaceful enough. But then, so did the waters at Amity Island until they weren't. Still, the setting at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center in Lakeview Terrace is the perfect backdrop for the first-ever Jaws movie night here.
I've been to a lot of movie nights, but never one in the pool. How cool is that?
We love Jaws. We're like big Jaws fans. We love sharks, so that's why we came. And this is awesome.
Oh my gosh. We are so excited to see Jaws. Seriously, watching Jaws from the water. Like, what could be more awesome?
Councilmember Monica Rodriguez and her staff run movie nights at various parks in her district. But this movie night is super special. There's even original movie signage, a giant Great White, a smaller mechanical shark to grapple with, and more.
You know, this pool is the largest municipal pool in the country. And we're, it's beautiful with a sandy beach. I wanted to create an environment where the community could come together and watch a movie like Jaws and recreate that environment from the movie.
Plus with all the kids and then that lake over there, it's all a little bit suspicious.
Yep, you never know what lurks. But no one seems too bothered as they chow down on the free food and hot dogs, and of course, the pre-movie popcorn.
Do you think everybody should come to movie nights?
Yes. Great. Everybody in the whole room!
Okay.
Then it's time to settle in, whether you pick the lounge chairs or the more suspicious pool water where things lurk, as Jaws bursts out of the water. Don't worry, it's just a movie.
Councilwoman Rodriguez held 11 movie nights over the summer. The city council moves forward to ban animal fur in the city. Traffic Appways hopes to make your drive a bit easier. And a city swim program makes a huge splash. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council moved forward with a plan to become the largest city in America to ban the sale and manufacturing of nearly all fur products. Prior to the vote, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield and other animal welfare activists held a rally at City Hall in support of the fur ban. Councilman Paul Carretts said he hoped the proposal would lead to widespread bans around the globe. This motion, co-presented by Carretts and seconded by Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, would take effect two years after passage of the ordinance and would specifically prohibit the sale of products such as apparel made in whole or in part of fur or any fashion accessory, such as handbags, shoes, hats, earmuffs, and jewelry.
The time for LA to step up has come. This is 2018, for god's sakes. The time is now.
Real-time traffic app Ways and the city of Los Angeles have teamed up to share information and help identify traffic conditions around LA to come up with long-term traffic solutions. Ways officials say there are 3 million active users in LA, which provides a wealth of traffic data across the city. Ways will also use data from the city to help keep users informed about current and upcoming road conditions.
I think everyone's striving for efficiency, and I think you can't be efficient without knowing the whole picture.
Mayor Eric Garcetti announced that Swim LA, an initiative to double the number of young people who receive swimming lessons at city pools, has already surpassed his goal of enrolling more than 36,000 Angelenos in classes this year. The mayor said Swim LA is a key engine in his drive to expand young people's access to low-cost sports and recreational programs. Garcetti launched Swim LA in June to help ensure that young Angelenos between the ages of four and 17 have more opportunities to learn how to swim. With support from partners, the program was able to grant thousands of scholarships to families who demonstrated financial need. To accommodate the additional lessons, the Department of Wrecker Parks expanded hours at nearly 50 pools, adding more than 3,000 operating hours at pools across the city. There's nothing quite like home sweet home. And one exhibit on Alvera Street features what some Angelenos call home, or in this case, casa.
It's an art and photography show about people and the places they call home. If that home happens to be in East LA, that is, the exhibit, Landscapes and Land dwellers at the La Plaza de Cultura y Artes Museum, has a uniquely Mexican-American point of view. And home, apparently, can mean everything, from a tent, to a house, to the barrio, or a casita, even a cardboard home.
A lot of the photos are photos of my communities that I grew up in. So that's East Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, El Sereno, Highland Park.
This exhibition is really important to the city of Los Angeles, we believe, because it really talks about the relationship between LA's people, its land dwellers, and its places, its landscapes. We've already had people come through and say like, oh, I know that person. Like, that's my friend, or that's my backyard. And so to be able to see yourself represented in such a visceral, realistic way on the walls of a museum is incredibly profound.
Artist Rafael Cardenas started clicking away in his neighborhood eight years ago, and he hasn't stopped. Meanwhile, he's taken up videography as well.
I kind of made my own road. I started shooting on my own. I'm not a studied artist. I self-taught. And I just grabbed a camera in 2010 and started taking pictures every single day of my life.
But the best thing about showing viewers both familiar and unfamiliar places, people, and experiences is just the human reactions the show inspires.
I've had people walk up to photos and I wouldn't expect it, and sometimes they just cry. It's happened.
The show runs from now to March 25th of next year.
And the show is free. For more information, visit lapca.org. Jazz fills the air at a Latin music fest. Make sure you're ready if an emergency happens. And it's a party in downtown LA, but you'll have to bike or walk to get there. All this and this week's things to do. It's time again for the fifth annual Latin Jazz and Music Festival. And Sunday's lineup is all women. The annual event includes live music, food trucks, informational and vendor booths, and a beer and wine garden. The special emcee is Richard Montoya from Culture Clash. The fest takes place at Sycamore Grove Park on Saturday, September 29th and Sunday, September 30th. Councilman Mitch Englander is proud to support the annual Valley Disaster Preparedness Fair. This is a free, fun event appropriate for all ages, where you can learn the steps to take so you can have the peace of mind that you are prepared in the event of the unexpected. All exhibits, demonstrations, displays, speakers, special events are free, as is parking, admissions, lunch, and family emergency preparedness starter kits. Keep in mind, lunch and kits are only available to attending families that have registered beforehand while supplies last. Sign up today so you can be guaranteed a kit. The fair takes place Saturday, September 29th, from 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM at Pacific Theater's parking lot, located at 9,400 Shirley Avenue in Northridge. For more, visit valleydisasterfair.com. Ciclovia is partnering with the LA Phil and Community Arts Resources and clearing the roadways between Walt Disney Concert Hall and Hollywood, transforming them into an auto-free zone where you can walk, run, skate, scoot, bike, and wander however you like. Six hubs along the route will feature art, food trucks, screen printing, kid-friendly fun, and dancing, as well as live music from LA's best musicians. Nearly 1,800 musicians, artists, and dancers will come together to perform at the festival's six hubs and along the eight-mile route itself. Think of it as an eight-mile free space saved just for you to do with it what you will. And that's not all. The evening ends with a free concert at the Hollywood Bowl, where Gustavo Dudamel will lead the Los Angeles Phil and welcome very special guests and more to the Bowl stage. This Ciclovia takes place Sunday, September 30th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. for more of LA This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
This is Korey Town. My name is Huang Be Kim. You watch LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Puskaino, Sadio, Anglender, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Caress, Krikorin, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present, Anna Coram, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. Oferell seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves. Mr. Wesson seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Items 1 and 12F to Friday, September 28th. The correct property address for Item 12F is 38 East 18th Avenue.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Next item, please.
Additionally, no action is required on Item 8 today inasmuch as council previously acted on the item on September 25th.
Terrific. We'll take it off the agenda. Next item.
Items 2 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for Item 2 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next items, please.
Items 9 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those items are now before us. Colleagues, do we have any specials on those?
There are cards on all items.
Cards on all items. We'll go ahead and hold cards on the desk.
Items 22 through 24 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
We'll go ahead and hold all those on the desk as well. Thank you very much.
And Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go into multiple speaker cards. Oh, we do? Okay, we're going to hold those then. We'll go ahead and go into presentations. Mr. Weiser. Also, before we start the presentations, I want to remind all the folks in the audience, we're not going to give any warnings. The council rules are if you disrupt this meeting, we're going to immediately escort you out. And so sergeants, feel free if they disrupt this meeting, if anybody disrupts the meeting, then we'll go ahead and escort them out. Thank you very much. And that includes disrupting presentations. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues and public, we have a very special presentation today. You know, here in the city of Los Angeles, our arts and our music venues and our musicians are very important to us. And we continue to make a mark in the world as the destination point for our arts and our music. And for over 100 years, one of the centerpieces of that has been the Los Angeles Philharmonic. They have been here in downtown Los Angeles since 1919. And we are gearing up to celebrate 100 years of their contributions to the city of Los Angeles. And we are here today to thank them for those contributions and also to acknowledge the incredible work they have done for over those 100 years. We are joined today by Jay Rasulo, Chair of the Los Angeles Philharmonic Board of Directors. We will hear from him in just a moment. Simon Woods, CEO of the Los Angeles Philharmonic Association. Gail Samuel, Executive Director of the Los Angeles Philharmonic Association. And we have a number of other people associated with the Philharmonic as well. We want to welcome them. Let's give them a big round of applause. You know, the Philharmonic has grown into a musical collaboration among the thousands of artists who have performed in it, the executive and artistic support staff like those you see here today, and the countless Angelenos who have been fortunate to experience this musical journey through all these years. It is a jewel in Los Angeles. It will soon be turning 100, like I said. And to celebrate this important milestone, they will begin their centennial year run from September 2018 to October 2019. And to kick off the centennial year, it has partnered with Cicluvia and Community Arts Resources to bring us Los Angeles Celebrate LA. This Sunday at our next Cicluvia Celebrate LA will activate the Walt Disney Concert Hall and the Hollywood Bowl via an eight-mile open street music festival lined with musical hubs and art throughout that corridor. I encourage all Angelenos to come out not only enjoy Cicluvia and alternatives to our busy streets every day, but also some arts that will be provided by the Philharmonic. In addition to Celebrate LA this year, the Phil kicked off their Resident Fellows program. This program provides comprehensive early career training in order to assist exceptional musicians from historically underrepresented populations with the performance experience, audition support, and mentorship needed to compete for positions in ensembles nationwide. And certainly in a city as diverse as ours, that program is much appreciated. And lastly, I would like to congratulate the LA Phil on their work with Youth Orchestra Los Angeles, also known as Yola. Yola Orchestra LA currently serves more than 1,200 students in South LA, the Rampart District, West LA, MacArthur Park, and East LA, providing free, high-quality music training and academic support. So we want to thank the LA Phil for all the work they do in our community, for bringing us the arts and great music. And at this point, I would like to invite Jay Rasulo to say a few words. Jay?
Thank you, Councilman Weiser. And thank you for all allowing us to be here. And I'm representing these people behind me, 106 amazing musicians at the Los Angeles Philharmonic, and of course, all the patrons and attendees at the Walt Disney Concert Hall and the Hollywood Bowl, year in and year out, actually, for nearly 100 years. When we thought about celebrating our 100-year anniversary, which is very, very exciting for us, there were a couple of themes that we had in mind. One, to thank the city of Los Angeles for being our bedrock for 100 years. Secondly, to celebrate the arts in Los Angeles. And thirdly, of course, to celebrate this landmark occasion for us. And we are just thrilled that, working in partnership with Cicluvia, we are able to take our music out of our two wonderful venues, the Hollywood Bowl and the Walt Disney Concert Hall, and bring it out. Hall, and bring it out to the people of Los Angeles on this eight-mile parade and celebration coming on this Sunday. You know, music is a universal language. And what more appropriate language in the city of Los Angeles to celebrate the multicultural nature of our city, the embrace of our city in music? There are 1,800 artists, musical artists, that will be performing on the parade route on Sunday. And I was told a few minutes ago that 1,800 musicians participating in a single event is actually the largest musical event in the history of Los Angeles. So, we are very, very happy to have been part of that. I welcome all of you. So, the parade route will be from the Hollywood Bowl to, from the Walt Disney Concert Hall to the Hollywood Bowl, where we will celebrate a free concert for all Angelinos at the Hollywood Bowl on the evening of Sunday, September 30th. I welcome all of you to come out to any or all of this SCLAVIA musical event. If anybody actually sees 1,800 musicians, please come and talk to me. I will do something special, very special. And I welcome all of you to, in our 100th year, participate in what will be a very exciting program for the Los Angeles Philharmonic. But mainly and foremost, I want to thank you for your support, for the city's support of the Los Angeles Philharmonic for all these nearly 100 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Mr. Rasulo. And Mr. Rasulo is the Chair of the L.A. Phil Board of Directors, as I mentioned, and on his spare time, he is also the Chief Financial Officer for the Walt Disney Company. So, thank you for giving of your time to a great institution here in downtown Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to acknowledge...
We do have one on the queue right before they're acknowledged. Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise to recognize and congratulate the Los Angeles, the world-famous Los Angeles Philharmonic on the 100th year anniversary, going from one iconic destination of the Walt Disney Concert Hall to the iconic destination of the Hollywood Bowl in the heart of Council District Four. So, I want to congratulate you. I look forward to the concert, and I'm so honored to be a part of the 100th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rue. And the earlier history does show that originally, it got to Hollywood Bowl when? When did it start?
Two years later.
Two years later.
So, we'll be celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Hollywood Bowl. We'll be back.
We'll be back. We'll be back. So, and it's the summer home of the L.A. Philharmonic now. So, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Rue, for your stewardship of continuing to move Hollywood Bowl forward with great performances. And so, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to acknowledge the L.A. Phil with Celebrate L.A. and their 100-year anniversary. Thank you for the work you do in the city of L.A. and for the impact you've made to all Angelinos and beyond. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. Let's give them another big round of applause, colleagues. Fantastic.
Thank you.
It's the glare. It's the glare.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
All right, also, we have some special guests here in chambers today. Chatsworth Park Elementary is in the house, all the way from CD 12. Give them a big welcome. Thank you for being here. You guys are on television right now? Go ahead and wave. All right, well, thank you very much, our future leaders of Los Angeles. Thanks for being here and visiting us today. All right, another special presentation by Councilmember David Rue.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. And good morning, yeah. Good morning, colleagues. As the Chair of the city's Health, Education, and Neighborhood Council Committee, I am proud to stand here today to promote Deaf Fest and recognize Deaf Awareness Month. I want to thank the Department of Disability and the Deaf Fest Planning Committee for all of the hard work organizing this month's festivities. It is estimated that 3 million deaf and hard-of-hearing people live in California and over 800,000 in greater Los Angeles alone. The deaf population in America has made so much progress through equality access laws and educational advancement, but it is far from enough. There are still challenges to living in a hearing-based society. For example, accessing quality education for deaf or hard-of-hearing students, securing employment, and finding job opportunities. That is why today and this month is so important to recognize that we need to continue advocating for greater resources for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Joining me to honor this important month is the sponsor for the past several years of Deaf Awareness Month, Councilman Mitch O'Farrell.
Welcome to Deaf Awareness Month. Twenty years ago, Los Angeles realized that there was a unique and thriving community in our city that had not received the attention or recognition that we have equally afforded other groups. That is why the city officially designated September as Deaf Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. It has been my great pleasure and honor to host this since I've been in office, but now it's in the very capable hands of our colleague David Rue, who handles all health issues for the city of Los Angeles. And we want to welcome everyone for this very important annual event, and I am honored just to be part of this again. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Deaf Festival gives deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals of all ages a venue to engage and network with their peers and empowers the more than 400,000 individuals who make up the deaf community in Los Angeles County to discover their God-given potential. If you haven't been to one of these Deaf Festivals on the steps of City Hall, you really need to be here to see how incredibly enjoyable these events are. And you can witness firsthand how the deaf and hard-of-hearing community is overrepresented in terms of talent in the arts and culture. It's a very, very special and enlightened community that we can all learn from. So, I want to thank again Councilmember Rue for your leadership in being the official host this year and for your work on the committee that you chair, County Supervisor Hilda Solis, Stephen Simon, who I understand couldn't be with us today, the Deaf Festival Committee, and all of the honorees. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Now, I'd like to bring up the event coordinator and the vital member of the Deaf Fest Planning Committee, and that's Tyrone Oraguzi.
I want to thank you very much, Mr. Rue and Mr. O'Farrell, and the City Council and the city of Los Angeles for supporting Deaf Festival. So, it's been a great honor for us to be here. I actually have been the lead for the committee, so I just want to say thanks very much for all the support you've given us.
Finally, I'd like to introduce three amazing individuals who have taken the mantle to be the emcees at the Deaf Festival, and that's Eddie Buck, Naisha Prince, and Nicholas Sanchez, who have redefined disability into a gift ability and are actively engaged in the community to empower more individuals and spread awareness. Eddie? Oh, right. Sorry. I think they're speaking.
We'd like to actually repeat what Tyrone said. We want to thank you for your support, and we're very honored to be the emcees for this festival. We're hoping that we can inspire both deaf and hearing communities to come together and provide some people some hope that maybe they can actually be part of the community, to be part of the change, to be change agents, to actually spread the love and respect that we have for each other throughout the community. So, thank you again for our opportunity to be here. Hi, my name is Naisha Prince, and we can't, it's the 20th anniversary of Deaf Festival. We're very proud to be part of this. And we really try to collaborate with the deaf and hearing communities because of the multiple projects that we've got. And again, just thanks very much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you also very much for advancing this important cause. Now, before I present the certificate on behalf of the City Council to Eddie and Naisha, I first want to say thank you, and I want to teach all my colleagues and everybody in the audience how to say "city of L.A." So, "city," a lot of roofs, a lot of rooftops, "city of L.A." So, thank you so much. And with that, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to present these commendations to honor Deaf Fest 2018.
Eddie?
Eddie?
Thank you, Councilmembers Rue and O'Farrell. I want to thank you all so. I want to thank you because we have, for years, I've had the honor and the privilege also of hosting this day. And for those who don't know, CSUN actually has the largest deaf studies here in California in my district. So, thank you for bringing them together today as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, colleagues, now, for our favorite time of the council meeting, we're gonna open it up to multiple speakers. And our two favorites, of course, back here and every day, Mr. Eric Previn. Eric, I'm gonna start your clock if you don't start walking up. Come on, you know the rules. Stay on the subject matter. Say be truthful and honest, but you're usually not, so that's all right. Go ahead.
It's, yeah, it's Eric Previn from CD2. I don't know what you mean by your two favorites.
You know exactly what I mean. Item 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, every item, I think, that's left. Go ahead, Eric.
Well, certainly, item 21 is the item in which the surveyor, who's getting a lot of work, is Chris Chan. He's been working in both CD5 and CD10, so kudos to the man for getting that work. It's two projects, one over on West Hargus near Washington in CD10, and one over by Detroit in CD5. Now, for item number 16, you've got UPS taking a little deal with LAWA, Lawa. Also, I must tell you, the legal bills that we're experiencing for the onside or the landside modernization project, you know, I look at a lot of legal fees around town. I look at the county board supervisor filed a lawsuit about that. I know a little bit about it. I mean, we are getting hosed in a big way. This is $11.5 million that they're just, you know, chipping away at, and I really wish I understood why it should cost so much in legal fees. It's a ton of money. It makes the, moving around on item number 18 at El Grito. Now, this is the El Grito Festival, which everybody supports, obviously. But this is like a little credit facility. Every couple weeks, there's a new shifting around of the money. Here, we have a five-to-one match where the great CD2 is putting in $1,000, and Price is matching with a $5,000 to the El Grito that already happened. So, that's interesting. Under the category of things that already happened, we also have item 20, which is the ATAS is the Academy of Television Arts and Science. They do a nice job with the Emmys, lowest rated in history. It's not their fault. But they're doing well in terms of producing content. Certainly, Mr. Bezos still has the $162 billion in reserve that he's trying to deploy. But here we are, the city of L.A., with all of my CD2 angry people looking for police patrols. Here we are giving $110,000 little contribution to cover their costs in the street. So, I would ask Bezos to cover that in the future. Mr. Blumenfeld, I know you like that, kind of like, hey, let's work cooperatively with our partners. It's not a bad way to go, because I must tell you, we are really hurting in Studio City. I speak not on behalf of the Neighborhood Council, but on behalf of the folks who are participating in the Neighborhood Council, who really feel a little exposed, given the lack of protection. Now, Westall's doing a great job with the cannabis program. I think everybody agrees on that. One problem is that there's confusion about what is the neighborhood liaison. So, we have people in our district wondering about that. We asked, he's a little, he's tied up, obviously, for a variety of reasons, but when it comes back, we get the wrong information. We get the name of the person at the place asking. So, they're like, hmm, how's it going down there? And we have to say it's going slowly. So, Ebenstein, who's doing an outstanding job with Caress, suggested maybe the Neighborhood Council should have little committees that work on...
Okay, your time's up. Thank you very much. Next, Herman, come on up. Sir, your time's up. I called you for multiple speakers, so... Herman, also on every item, two minutes, three minutes.
So, what are we doing with this awards? And I'm referring to awards for the Emmy. Highest-paid academy on television, and the scumbags of that academy can't pay for their overcosts? Why should the taxpayers pick up the buck? I'll tell you why. Because we have tyrants running this city, and let's give El Grito a shout for that. Fuck them. That's right. Amending prior council action, August 23rd, El Grito Celebration. The only wetback here to make El Grito is me, but I'm not a wetback. I support Trump. Then I go into item 19, Wesson, and the schmuck without a legal bar license dealing with $2.5 million. That's a lot of fucking change nowadays. But it's still not enough to improve the infrastructure of what's happening in Los Angeles. Now, if you're a motorist, if you're a pedestrian, guess what? Delays on repairs. And who should you blame on this? Who the fuck should you blame on all this? Blame it on your elected officials who pay out on these settlements, just like on item 24. You see, when you do something good, I'm here to protest and support. Unfortunately, item 24, fucking religious land use. Well, why not put some fucking housing for the homeless on a religious land use?
So, we actually took public comment in committee on that.
All right. So, along Crenshaw Boulevard, why can't us white niggers build for homeless people? I'm a white nigger. According to my legal document, they call me a cunt for Caucasian.
So, I don't think you're on any of the agenda items.
No, you don't know where the fuck...
No, he's not. So, your time is up. You've already been warned. Your time's up. Your time's up. You've been warned. Sit down, or you're gonna be disrupting this meeting. You're disrupting this meeting. Sergeants, please escort him out for disrupting this meeting. We've already warned him twice. City Attorney warned him. He's continuing to disrupt the meeting. Goodbye. Goodbye, Herman. See you later. Wait for him to gather his things while he's disrupting this meeting. Still yelling out from the audience.
He is, and he's preventing us continuing our business, interfering with the progress of the meeting. And he's shouting vulgarities from the audience.
Have a great day. Not really, but have a great day.
I love the Jews, but I don't love you, Jew-Jew. Jews, I think you love you, but you know that's...
And he's still shouting as he leaves, walking backwards, attempting to slow the meeting down and keeping us from continuing.
All right, continuing to shout as he exits the room. All right. So, let's turn our attention back over to the agenda. Do we have items before us that do no longer have public comment?
Yes, the council can vote on items nine through 21.
Okay, let's go ahead and take those items up now, colleagues. Okay, let's go ahead and take those items up now, colleagues. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, next item, please. Wait, Mr. O'Farrell, yes.
With on four, item 14.
Item 14, forthwith, without objection. That'll be the order. Thank you very much. Okay. Colleagues, any other? None? Okay, so the next items, please.
The next items are closed session item 22, 23, and 24.
Okay, let's go ahead and take items 22 and 23 up.
And Mr. President, on item 22, in the case entitled Aaron Vermuelin et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $180,000 in settlement of the matter.
Okay.
And on item 23, in the case entitled La Rhonda Jenkins and Michael Lockridge versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $5 million in settlement of the matter.
All right, with that, colleagues, Mr. Kokorian.
I just, 22 and 23 have both been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval. And I just had a brief question on item 24, which I'd like to do in closed session, Mr. President, if that's okay.
Okay, very well. So, we'll go ahead and take up 22 and 23. We can open the vote. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. We're gonna go ahead and go into closed session on 24. Not calling that one yet. Javel, and he's already gone, actually, so we'll take him off. Javelin Wells, Rose Watson, Sal Zambro, and Patricia Mendoza, if you all want to come on up. And then the last speaker for general public comment will be Eric Previn. So, if you all want to come up, if I don't see you up, then I'm gonna just take your name off the board. So, we only have three people up there now? Okay. All right, if you wanted to speak, come on up. Eric Previn, I'm gonna take your name off. You don't want to speak? If you want to speak, come on up. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. I am Sal Zambro, and I am the president of the Los Angeles Professional Managers Association, or LAPMA. LAPMA is affiliated with SEIU Local 721 and the Coalition of City Unions. We wish to add to the comments you received from the Coalition last Friday, September 21st. Please note that we are far apart from resolving our new contract and look to you and our mayor for leadership to settle our contract, so the city remains an imporative choice where the best and brightest serve the public and realize your initiatives. Over the next couple of weeks, you'll hear from several speakers that we still need to resolve the following: common salary steps and healthcare coverage for all LAPMA and Coalition members, including all new and future members; a cost of living adjustment that safeguards our middle-class jobs against inflation; and an equal pay for equal work and equity, where managers at several city departments are paid less than other managers who do similar work. I respectfully thank you for your consideration.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. I'm Harold Fajita. I'm here on my own time and speaking strictly for myself and for my brothers and sisters in the Coalition of City Unions. The Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, or what's commonly called inflation or CPI, was at 3.9% for the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim area, the last time recorded data was available. So, let's not quibble over a tenth of 1%, let's just call it 4%. When bargaining began in May, the city offered a 2% cost of living increase. Today, the city is still at 2%. When would our members get that 2%? Not tomorrow, no. Not next week, no. Not next month, no. In January 2019. So, really, 2% over a six-month period for a fiscal year, let's just admit that that's 1%. That's not acceptable. That's simply not acceptable. If you want our city workforce engaged and committed, that needs to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Javelin Wells, and I represent the Confidential Senior Personal Analyst, which is MOU 64. MOU 63 and 64 are the newest units to join LAPMA, which is part of the Coalition of City Union Members. Yet, the city's negotiators continue to separate us at their proposals. The city's negotiators outline in every meeting that 63 and 64 are not included in any other Coalition negotiation proposals. As Coalition Members, we deserve to be treated equally and not segregated from the Coalition of City Members. We are asking for common healthcare coverage for all LAPMA and Coalition Members, including all new and future Members. We ask that the segregation stop and there be fair and equal treatment at the bargaining table for all Coalition of City Union Members. Thank you.
Good morning, city councils and the public. I'm here again to follow up regarding my incident of August 31 with the city council, Herb Weson. I'm gonna go ahead and finish regarding the abuse and the harassment and this snapping Hitler sign. And it's very important that you guys understand that nobody should have to come to City Hall. And all city councils allowed the harassment and the abuse. Do I need to remind you guys that you guys did the under oath regarding condom, condom of, condom of, coat of condom? And all of you guys just sat here and did not do anything regarding the harassment and the abuse? And there's two female city councils sitting here, and no one came out to my defense. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. If I was in your seats, I would never let your daughter, your mother, your wife go through this abuse at City Hall.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Actually, Mr. Previn, you can go ahead and have a seat. We're gonna come back to general public comment. We're gonna go back to the agenda for a minute, so you can have a seat.
Me, sir?
No, Mr. Previn. Thank you. So, the city attorneys are now here, and so I know their time is precious, and they were working on some other cases. So, they rushed down, but they gotta rush back up, so I wanted to get to them right away. And so, if we could go into closed session on item 24. So, we'll go ahead and go into closed session now. And if you can go ahead and clear the chamber.
Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We'll go ahead and, and we've got to take up the vote. First, we'll read the changes or recommendations.
On item 24, in the case entitled "The West Valley Christian Center versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement of the matter.
Okay, and with that, colleagues, before we actually open the vote on this matter, just a message to the litigants that had sued the city of Los Angeles on this. I think there's a good belief that based on the history and what happened in this particular case, there'd be a strong recommendation, and I think I can speak on certainly my behalf and many of my colleagues, that we would ask you to donate the money to a local nonprofit in the community. And since you already got approval and you're moving forward and building, but with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to, back to general public comment. Is that correct? We have a Javelin Wells. Is Javelin still here? No longer here? Okay. Our final general public comment then, Eric Previn.
Yeah, it's Eric Previn from CD2, and for the record, that church sued the city of LA over not getting their conditional use permit timely. So $500,000 is, in a word, outrageous, and this body should certainly not agree to that. I mean, are you kidding me? And sir, you sued the church nearby, only eight miles away, because your daughter backed up and something was fine. I'm on general.
Go ahead. Yes, you are. Under matters under the purview of this body, that's not.
That's a loss. You're taking my time. I'm going to be very clear, okay? You have been playing fast and loose, sir. I do not appreciate this special treatment, and I've been getting it in various places because I'm a watchdog and a writer about this body's business. And your Rule 16 antics, trying to move items that come before this council to other committees, I don't think that's cool. I don't think it's appropriate. And Charles, bless his heart, from Building and Safety, is not an appropriate forum to pitch your case to. He's a guy who likes to nail people with liens, and you guys have to do that out in the open. I don't know what to tell you. And regarding your debate, you know, the items that you're looking at.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you very much, Mr. Previn. So with that, colleagues, that concludes general public comment. Do we have any motions for posting referral?
Yes, council has motions for posting a referral.
Shocking. All right, we'll go ahead and post and refer those. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? I'm looking to my right. Looking to my left. Do we do? If we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for an adjourning motion. Mr. Sadio.
Yes, with deep sadness, a member of the city family, someone who works with my staff, Arthur Vincent Sanchez, Superintendent of Solid Resources Collection Division, North Central District Yard, left us on Saturday, September 15th. He was born and raised in LA. He began his career in 1986, and his entire 32-year tenure was with the Department of Sanitation. For all those who knew him, he was a diehard fan of the Raiders, the Trojans, and the Dodgers. Two out of three, that's not bad. He passionately displayed his devotion for his teams as his office was proudly covered in team colors and memorabilia for all to see. Countless conversations about his team's wins and losses. He was a huge enthusiast, and the camaraderie extended throughout the office. He would spend his own time with others outside of work on motorcycle runs, motocross riding, picnics, barbecues, bike rides. I mean, he was a real outdoors person, enthusiast. And he had moved up the ranks and became a superintendent, and encouraged others. He was a great leader and a role model, and encouraged others to pursue their careers as well. On September 28th, there will be a viewing from 5:00 to 9:00 at Mission Hills Catholic Mortuary, and then a funeral on Saturday, September 29th, 2018, commencing at 11:00 o'clock, San Fernando Mission Cemetery. He was a devoted family man, survived by his wife, Mina, their children, Anthony, Arthur Jay, and Elisa, many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and siblings and his extended family. And so with a heartfelt condolence, we offer that to the entire family, and that's that we close this session in his memory.
Well, thank you for that. May he rest in peace. Colleagues, do we have any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, that concludes this meeting. We are officially adjourned. Be safe.